Thank you Nancy. I think I see Michelle there, so why don't we just give it another minute and we'll get started. So yeah, I asked that question. At the training that we had last meeting. If we had a quorum, but that quorum wasn't at that meeting and anybody had to abstain, as long as we have a quorum here and the majority of that quorum then votes, then you're okay.
Very good.
Yeah, but I had that same question. Hey Nancy, just for planning, is there anybody currently online from the public? Alright. Hello Ms. Austin. Hope was, you know, by herself over there, she wanted a buddy.
Oh, we don't have.
We don't have name tags, but which one is Michelle?
Who am I?
Oh.
Are we one chair off?
I was gonna say, from the last meeting, I thought I was on this side.
And then had Hope. Oh.
Where are you Kate?
I'm right in the same spot, but we're just next to each other.
Oh, we're the same side over to the sides?
Yes, so you're right here.
Yeah, is that a requirement that we sit in places or can we adjust that? I would assume we can adjust that at some other point.
Yeah, we're a little tight, we'll go back. It's okay, everybody knows why I'm any wise. Or if not, they will.
If you want changing a seating, just let me know the order so I'll put them up the way you want them however.
Can we just move it? Thanks for. It's slides. Yeah. Alright, why don't we go ahead and get started then while we're doing this, if that's okay Nancy?
Sure. Ms. Austin?
Here.
Ms. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Ms. Sweringer?
Here.
Chair Hagerty?
Here.
Tina is absent, Kate Townley is absent, and Erin Martinez is absent, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you Nancy, so next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from June 6th. Can I get a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the minutes from June 6th.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Michelle, thank you.
Alright, and that was Michelle's second. I don't know if she has to vocalize that through the.
Second.
Thank you. And if we get a call for approval?
Okay, Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Abstain.
Ms. Sweringer?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we can move on to public forum. I just confirmed if there was any, but have any joined in in the interim here?
There's no one online and I don't see anyone in public.
I'm not seeing anybody in the room, so then we can just move right on to the next agenda item, which is changing of the official meeting time and with, I guess per the bylaws currently, the meeting is set at 7:00 PM. That's publicly noticed, so it's something that we would have to change the bylaw to make it 6 o'clock. So I guess with that, any discussion from council about changing the meeting time?
I would like to suggest that 6:30 is a better time, just because a lot of people work and it's tough to get home. But I'll go with, you know, the majority, no problem.
Thank you Michelle, others?
What is the reason for changing from 7?
The in-changing that I understand, I think that's part of this discussion here, is we are tending to go pretty late, especially as we're going through UDC or going through a lengthy zoning amendment or zoning change request. And so trying to make it more efficient, not only for us, but for staff as well.
So you expect it to go past 2 hours?
We've gone past 2 hours, frequently, I know that.
Yeah, okay, very seldom, but we have, yeah.
I'd say when we have a full meeting, we often go past 2 hours, would be my opinion of it, but yeah.
Like I said before, it doesn't matter to me, but people that work, it seems like it's kind of tight. To get something to eat, get off work, drive home, whatever.
Yeah, that's a good point. Brenda, look like you've got something?
I'll just say I prefer 6:00 PM because I hate to go so late.
Okay. Anyone else? You know, I'm good with 6:00 or 7:00 or 6:30 for that matter. You know, I want to be respectful of everyone's time trying to get here. I know Michelle, you obviously were a little tight getting in, I was coming in a little hot also. I think, you know, being cognizant of that. I would like to get others' opinion on 6:30 or whether 6 o'clock is the better. So Carl, we'll start with you, come down this way.
6:30 would be fine, I would probably prefer 7, but 6:30 is fine.
Okay, Brenda?
Yeah, first choice 6, second choice 6:30.
Okay, Kate?
I'm with Brenda, so 6 and then 6:30 would be my preference.
And Michelle?
6:30.
And Hope?
I'm good with either 6, 6:30, 7, so I think just between Carl's preference for 7 and Michelle's for 6, I would be comfortable doing 6:30 just to meet in the middle.
I think I am going to be inclined to that, so with that, we've noticed that it is being changed since it's written in here as 6 o'clock, can we change that to 6:30 as part of this meeting? Does that mean we need to bring it back next month?
No, that's fine, you can make the motion that it be at 6:30 and we just change the bylaws if it passes at that time, and then I'll have those at the next meeting for you to sign.
Alright, so can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we change the regular meeting time to 6:30 PM.
I'll second.
If we can have a vote?
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Ms. Sweringer?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Alright, and with that, we can get on to the code next study session, so I think we have Mr. Brewster online to do a presentation, or is that from others?
Sorry, yes, Mr. Brewster's online.
Yes, good evening commissioners, I don't know, should I just jump into it Nancy and Brian?
Yes, I do want to make a comment on his first slide, it says steering committee. And we are meeting as the planning and zoning commission and not as the steering committee, so I just want to make that correction now before he starts.
Alright, thanks for that correction Brian. So this is a presentation, a comprehensive presentation of the entire draft of the UDC. So this first slide is just a backup and to go over an overview of some of the project goals from way back when we started in late 2021. Obviously, this project had a long legacy before we joined, before the commission and steering committee met over those months, and so these are some of the goals that fed into that. Many of them coming out of the code assessment that was prepared in 2020 and 2021. And that was a document that was analyzing your development code for a number of different city planning policies and goals, but most strongly, the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2017. Most of this presentation, I'm going to go through some of the the boards that were the theme of the open house that we conducted last week. But then there's some summaries that tie it back to some of the key changes that are going to be presented to you all in July. So this is the overall UDC framework that this was our, really our first kind of deliverable was to reorganize the code into a table of contents. One of the bigger objectives was to make the code user-friendly, well-organized, easy to navigate. This is also an important piece of the puzzle for us because we think it's what gives the development code a longer shelf life if it's well organized. Some of the things that aren't exactly right, or new things that pop up, you'll have an easier time making amendments and then the idea that the code will stick together longer through some of the changes that the city will face over time. But this was our tool to discuss with both the technical committee, which was a staff group of different departments that deal with code issues, and then the steering committee, which was planning commission plus extra individuals that we focused on these main topics early on, coming out of the Inglewood Next Comprehensive Plan and coming out of the code evaluation as well. From that, there were a number of other public engagement inputs, this is a slide that reflects one of the boards from the open house last week, so just quite a bit of number of meetings. Most with you all as the steering committee, many city council work sessions as well. The public meetings involved primarily a kickoff meeting last February, or a year ago February, our April open house engagement, then an online engagement process in April of May of last spring. And then we went into the work sessions and actually drafting the code. And then last week, we had our last open house with the public in the park to accept more feedback and comments from the drafts. That strategy was mainly to get big picture ideas and then go work on them with either technical committee, steering committee, or some of the stakeholder groups that were also involved in some of this as well. Meanwhile, while all that was going on, the staff continued to collect input through the Inglewood Engage website. And so there's, that 23,000 is actually the number of, it's not 23,000 individuals, but it's the number of clicks and engagement that was occurred through either views, comments, or things that were left on that webpage. This was the other board that talked about some of those key themes and strategies, really mainly simplification and clarity to kind of raise expectations of the development code, and so we've accomplished that. We feel through a number of objectives, another number of strategies. Flexibility and better decisions and the outcome, so a lot of the things that are more process-based, how do we make decisions under this code? And then the right half of this screen is mainly talking about some of the larger context topics, the topical things to try and integrate the development code in with some of the planning policies and goals of the community. So to sum all that, those structural things up, we feel we've simplified the code in three main areas. One, a better organization, two, switching even when we didn't change the content of the code using a more plain language strategy, trying to say things more directly and succinctly, maybe eliminating conflicts where things were said differently in a few different places, but essentially said the same thing and consolidating. And then also supporting or even replacing some of the code language with graphics and tables. Mainly the tables were pretty instrumental in shrinking a lot of the text down into some easier to find and easier to navigate standards. With regard to flexibility, a multi-layered approach to that, first off with the substantive standards, one of two ways or sometimes both, and that's giving ranges rather than a one-size-fits-all standard. So sometimes the standards will reflect between certain numbers. The second thing would be that sometimes certain standards only apply in certain situations, or even more importantly, require an analysis of the actual physical context of the site. So when we talk about the frontages coming up here in a few slides, that's an example of that. The second layer was to give administrative adjustments, so the right half of the screen is kind of showing how we achieve that, and that's by really making sure all the standards have clear intent or even further design objectives, those things that are describing the outcome we want from the standard. So even though the standard might be objective and measurable, some of the alternatives that we consider or that applicants could propose and staff could accept can be handled through that administrative adjustment process, provided they meet the criteria and the procedures and provided they have a direct link to some of those design objectives that are listed in the code. The next two bullet points are things that are in your existing code now with regard to plan development. And we've simply, we think we've improved those processes by leveraging some of the strategies we've used in some of the design standards already, so an easier way to think of it is the default standards that we'll talk about tonight. We want those to be the basis of PUDs as well, and then you're evaluating whether those those types and things that we've pre-coded into the code as far as design standards need to be adjusted for a particular context, whether that's a smaller scale project that your PUDs are geared for, which is still retaining that one-half acre or one-acre threshold to even get to that. Or whether it's a larger-scale plan development that involves a bigger area plan and you could begin to use some of the same principles in the code to build your area-specific development code as well. And those are, again, those are things that are already in your current code, we've just connected them a little bit better to some of these strategies. And then the last was a specific one that was brought to both staff, steering committee and council's attention was limited expansions and non-conformances. The code already has some of those in there, but particularly in residential settings, we added another one that primarily dealt with existing non-conforming uses in buildings. If they were being invested in and added on to in a way that resulted in projects that were actually lower scale or lower intensity than what could be built under the zoning district, that we should be able to entertain those investments and not be as rigid on the non-conforming status of those properties. And then lastly, on the larger substantive changes, all of them tied back to some of the key themes that were either drawn from the Comprehensive Planning Inglewood Forward, the Development Code Assessment in 2021, and 2020 and 2021, steering committee and technical committee meetings that occurred in 2021, 2022, and then public workshops and open houses, and then city council and steering committee work sessions when we're actually working through the drafts in 2022 and 2023. So all of those things were instrumental in shaping the direction we went, particularly initially even the public workshops and open houses from a year ago. You know, a lot of, they had a lot of influence on some of the things we explored and with the steering committee. Next, I'm going to move into some of the key substantive topics, and again, these are the five main boards that were presented at the open house last Thursday in the park. And the first one is expansion of ADUs. This slide shows the areas where new things would be introduced. The gold are current R1C, R2, or the mixed-use districts where ADUs are currently already allowed. And the red would be R1A, R1B, and some MUR3C where ADUs are not currently allowed, but they would be under this code. Some summaries of what we're doing there, the direction was to expand options for ADUs. And so we did that in a number of ways. The first is allow, currently you only allow them in detached buildings. So this code is proposing to allow them in detached or attached buildings. The second would be adding the R1A and B district as I mentioned. The third would be in those districts that are already zoned and planned for multiple units. In other words, property can have anywhere from a duplex up to a fourplex or eightplex under the current zoning that existing detached homes there could have multiple ADUs. So it's a way of giving the existing detached houses in those districts zoned for multiple units a little more adaptability and possibly maybe a way to keep many of them and giving a little more versatility to the number of units they could provide. And then lastly, in the non-residential districts, where they may, or they currently aren't allowed, some of those districts are allowing residential projects and some of them are allowing, they are allowing detached homes existing, but they wouldn't have an ADU allowed with them. And so we're suggesting that if the detached house was allowed anyway to allow the ADU there as well. We don't think that would be a widely-used strategy for new development because again, most of those districts are much more valuable and zone for more intensive uses. But again, for existing homes in those areas, it might be a viable strategy. The second thing with ADUs was, one of the main goals is to retain and preserve the neighborhood character. So there's a few things that are key to expanding the options, and the first is to ensure that the the unit is subordinate and incidental to the principal unit, so minimizing outward appearance of an additional unit. Particularly with moving to the attached, there was a concern that, well, now aren't we just allowing duplexes? And so the answer to that is no, the size limit should control the buildings from becoming a duplex, and then there are some design standards to minimize the outward appearance. Secondary entrances need to be more discreet or on more remote sides of the buildings if it's attached or if it's detached oriented towards the inward part of the lot. The size limits, again, there's a slight adjustment here that came from the steering committee discussions was, currently you have a 650 limit or up to the size of the principal unit. So the direction was, let's just keep it simple, so make it a flat 800 square foot unit to allow a little more flexibility on the size, and then not really tie it to how large or small the principal unit is. And then for basement units to really just have the limit be the footprint, since that will by definition kind of keep the unit more discreet. And then it's also the idea that it's hard to enforce, if it was a portion of a basement, the square footage amount didn't seem to make sense. So just allowing it to be that, the size of that footprint, even if it is larger than 800 square feet. And then overall, all of the buildings, whether attached or detached, will be allowed to the same design standards and other limitations as a detached house, so all the massing standards, all the design standards. And essentially, it's not adding any capacity that a detached home without an ADU couldn't otherwise build. So although it might encourage people to build a new building where there isn't one, it wouldn't be an additional building that they couldn't have otherwise built anyway. So that's kind of a key distinction to show that it's putting homes with ADUs and those without on equal footing. And the last category is removing some of the impediments. First, expanding the options above, should you get rid of impediments where they currently weren't allowed at all? And the last two are current standards that the direction was to remove them, the first being owner occupancy requirement, so there would no longer be that. One of the discussions at the open house that brought some clarification was people thought that meant that, well, now you could subdivide and chunk that off and rent it, but no, the point is that if there's still one owner of the whole property, it's just that they don't have to be on-site so they can rent the homes, just like they could rent a detached house. But you can't technically subdivide it, although you could rent it to different tenants as you could in a house right now as well. And then the last one, removing the parking requirement, which got some substantial discussion both at the council and steering committee, but that was the direction to remove that. Brian, I guess should I just keep moving through the presentation and circle back to discussion? There's four more main topics to round this out.
How would the commission like to go? Would you want to stop at the end of each topic? Ask questions and then move forward, or just go through the whole thing and then ask questions?
Thanks for sharing. I believe I'd like to talk about each one of these topics, I think they're gonna have some discussion, at least make sure we're all on the same page as we move forward with them. So with that, I'd like to open it up for the ADU discussion, if there is any.
I have a question. Okay, so, and I might, I'm trying to follow along in the packet that was presented to us. And when it comes to ADUs, it almost looked like the ADU has to be in the rear 40%, but am I reading that incorrectly on the table?
Yeah, no, there isn't necessarily a requirement that is in the rear, although detached buildings, ADU or not, typically have to be in the side or the rear depending on the lot configuration. And then how you deal with the entrance could affect how it's oriented, so. But in general, no, there's not a requirement that it's in the rear, but that's one of the ones where it being subject to all of the standards of a detached house without an ADU, it's going to lend towards it being most likely that it's there, but I think there could be some configurations where it's to the side or even on the front, as long as it's tied in with the frontage of the principal building somehow.
Thank you, that answers that question.
Any other questions, Michelle?
Yes, I thought, did we talk about up to three ADUs before? I thought it was two before, and it was the general consensus that was down to one.
So there were, and Chris, jump in whenever you'd like. I think originally, the discussion was two ADUs. If the lot square footage was over 7,200 square feet, and then it went to council at one of their study sessions, and one of the council members requested that it go down to 6,000 square feet to be two in some of the R1 districts. At the last council study session we had in May, that was one of four questions that they had asked us to bring back to the steering committee, you know, get some direction from them, move it forward. And what we heard from this group was to, the two units was not the direction that the steering committee wanted to go. So we moved it back down to one. What you will see in there is a change or a discussion, and maybe Chris can talk about it a little bit, in some of the districts where you would, it would currently allow for multiple units on-site, so where someone could scrape a single-family home and build a quadplex. There is a change in there that would allow additional ADUs. And from a staff and our consultant's perspective, I think that's a a chance or something that we are thinking or hoping will incentivize someone to keep the existing home by allowing them to build the additional units, but not tear down the original home just to get four units. So there are some in that table, in chapter five, there are a couple of districts, and I'm not looking at the table right now, Chris can probably do this right offhand, that would allow for additional ADUs, but those are in districts where if someone wanted to, they could tear down the whole structure and build a duplex, triplex, quadplex, something like that. So in the single-family districts, you only see one.
Okay, I re-watched that meeting in May, and I didn't hear anything about three, maybe it was, I didn't get to the entire, through the whole meeting, but in the residential districts, I don't think it was ever considered. I thought we all agreed on one, am I wrong?
Yeah, I think that was only in discussion in the R1A and R1B area versus R2 where you are already allowed to have two. And R3, you could have more ADUs at that point.
I'll go back and look again, but I listened to the majority, and else I heard was, I mean, we did, there were some people talking about two or one, and you were one of them, Paul, I think, and you were at two, and then you went back to one. So we didn't have a big discussion on the MU districts, is that what you're saying?
Well, and as I'm thinking about that, and it would be good to get this confirmation, I believe that we only really were discussing the R1s in that meeting. I don't believe there was a discussion further of R2s or R3s.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear that either.
And so I think what they're saying is, since you are allowed to have three units on an R3, that you would then be able to put in three ADUs, or I guess, and maybe that is the question. If you're allowed to have three units and you've got a single building, I think you should be able to allow two ADUs in an R3, because that would be then three units the same as you would. And what I really want to try to emphasize, if we can, is a way to keep some of that stock, housing stock that we do have. I mean, I think that's one of the things that I've heard a lot in Inglewood is there's some affordability, but we keep tearing them down to put in a lot more slot homes or duplexes that aren't affordable or attainable even. And so if we can keep an 800-square-foot house and put in an ADU, I'd like to be able to push, I would like to push for that, then have a developer come in and tear that 800-square-foot down and be able to by right have three units, but it's a triplex or something like that onsite instead.
Well, I think I would caution that by removing the owner occupancy and also removing the parking spot and making up to three ADUs in the R2 and MUR districts, that we might be getting exactly what we don't want, which is a bunch of developers coming in and building a whole bunch of, you know, units. And I think that all three of those things taken together are a bad idea. I think we should limit it in some respects. I also think that, Chris, you brought up a really good point in the last meeting in early May about some of these topics, and ADU is a prime one. Maybe we should treat like R1A differently than R1B and preserve neighborhoods that way rather than just sort of, everybody can have an ADU kind of thing. Well, can I?
Can I chime in here? So I think that this is pretty respective of R1A and B as requested. You can have one ADU and keep in mind that there are people who are just trying to discover their family or have an elderly person be taken care of. And then the the parking situation really lends towards a developer because it's a developer that can afford to build the required off-street parking and the units above or expand that. It's the person who already has a home that maybe wants to bring in another relative and is hampered by that extra cost. So I'm thinking of the instance, there's a home near Jason Park and they needed their mother-in-law to move in. And because of the parking requirement, they had to build above the garage. And now it kind of overlooks the yards and looks awkward and the neighbors next door aren't really used to seeing this height. But if they didn't have that parking requirement, they could have for almost half the cost, just retrofitted their garage. So again, the argument for parking is if that you are someone who wants to make, earn income from it, you will get a better income and, and find better, more tenants if you provide parking. So there is a market incentive for providing a parking space. Again, for instance, I rent out my garage and I have a off-street parking space with a gate. And I'm asked all the time, because we have a bit of a car theft situation in the metro area, is can I park my car off street? So see, I always, I always have a nurse staying there. I, I'm always able to rent it. If you don't have that, you're not going to have a lot of market viability anyway. And I don't want to put that off for people, like I said, who just want to move their mother or father in or expand their, their family.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Bell?
Oh, I just wanted to ask Chris, and this might help clarify for Commissioner Austin, wh- what would be the situation where somebody could have three ADUs? Can you give us some example?
Yeah, and this discussion kind of hit it that, you know, it, it is not in R1 districts at all. So it's only those districts that are already zoned to have multiple units, but they happen to have a single unit detached house on the lot. So it's giving that situation additional options. And it would come with a couple of, some of the, the standards that we've mentioned that, that help keep it neighborhood scaled. And so the first would be that you only get multiple if, if only one of them is detached. So there's, it's, it's not, it, because it had multiple ADUs, it shouldn't appear any differently than any other property with an accessory building or any other property with one ADU. So that extra unit is going to be in an attached unit with the building internal to it. And then the other element that comes with it is we did want to put those properties on equal footing that, of properties that could have a duplex or a quadplex. And so right now that's a distinction between R2A and R2B. So to deal with that, what we did was we just said the, the property would need to have at least 2,000 square foot per each unit, including the principal unit. So a 6,000 square foot lot would still only get two. An 8,000 square foot lot could get that third unit and anything over 8,000 or, or could get that. Yeah, that second ADU and that third unit, and then only anything over 8,000 could get that fourth unit. And that roughly puts it on par with the duplex and quadplex standards. Those districts currently have a, they don't even have, the R2B doesn't have a unit limit. It just has a minimum lot area, 3,000 square foot per unit. So it could actually have, and you, I believe it could have buildings with even more than four in it. So again, it's just, it's just another strategy, give those existing detached houses more options.
Okay, so to translate that, you're in an R2B, you have a 75 foot wide lot. You could either scrape the single family home on that and build a triplex, which would be three overall units. Or you could keep the thousand square foot home that's in front, have an ADU in the basement, do a little addition for another ADU and then have a detached AD, actually no, have, have an ADU in the basement and have an ADU that's detached for three total units.
Correct. And then that, that scenario you started to explain where it would get that extra unit would only be if the lot was over 8,000 square feet.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Question. I, I think we might need a little more information and, but I think I appreciate that question. Can you clarify the third ADU being the separate unit? Can there be two in the external unit or is there only one allowed in the separate unit?
Right now, as, yeah.
So you would have to have a basement and something off the back theoretically. And then you could add in a, a natural separate building. So we wouldn't dictate which one you have to do, only that if you choose to do an external, you only get one external. Okay. So we're not saying you have to do an external if you do your first ADU. From what, what I understand, we have a lot of basements. We have a lot of illegally converted basements that we get turned into us all the time. I would anticipate that those are probably going to be the first ones to come in. People that want to convert their basement. If they have the, the, the square footage to do a second one, it probably would be detached. Just, that's just my thought going through it, how I would do it. The third one would be attached for me. But I, I do anticipate that a lot of them won't come in at first as basements, just because that's something that we don't currently allow. But it's something that we have proliferation of is basements in Colorado.
I, I think based on this conversation though, I, I'd like to get others' opinion, but I think having three total units on an MUR3 still makes sense. I don't know about basement addition off the back and then a third separate unit. I'm not saying that it's impossible and if it's a big enough lot, I guess I could possibly see it. But I don't know why, I guess is the intent to then try to, again, keep the house. So you would basically be able to have one extra unit instead of scraping it and putting, putting in three from the MUR3?
Can you repeat that question? Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, no, I rambled for a second there. So MUR3, you can have three units. Is that correct? And so if you have the main house, a thousand square foot house on the lot, you could tear that down and put in three units. We're saying that if you add a basement ADU, an attached ADU and then a separate ADU, you would end up having four units because you would have the main house and three ADUs.
So if you're, and Chris, jump in, sorry, I'm interrupting you. If your square footage on your lot would only allow you to build a triplex, I believe the way our code is written with ADUs, you'd only get three total units, including the single family home that's already there. So if you have 6,000 square feet, you'd get the single family home that's already built on the lot. Then you could choose to do one detached. You could do basement units. I mean, you could, you could potentially have two units in the basement if that's how you wanted to, you know, subdivide your basement, you know? That's more of a building code issue, meeting the building code, as long as you meet the numbers. It doesn't necessarily have to be something you add on to the house. If you can go back in there and renovate your house and do what needs to be done, uh, building code wise to do that. We just, you know, we felt that if, if we were already going to allow somebody the ability to essentially what people have told us they don't want, scrape the lot and build something. And this is something that our code currently allows by right in the majority of these districts. Not the single family, but some of the R2s and the MUR3s allows those multiple units. Why would we not allow them to do something that we can, we can look at from a perspective of this is incentivizing someone to keep the house and not just tear it down and build as many units as they can?
That makes much more sense to me. Thank you. I, I do have one other question about the additional parking requirement. Is there a parking requirement for a single family home?
Yes, there's a requirement of two spaces.
So if you would have, you had, and that has to be off-street?
It does have to be off-street. It does not have to be in a garage.
If you are going to add an ADU and you don't currently have any off-street parking, would that then make it require that they add the addition, not additional, because it's already required, but it hasn't been put in already?
I think that's going to involve a bit of an interpretation. I think my, I defer to staff, but my assessment of it would be that's a, it's a non-conforming situation. And so whether that principal unit could exist without the parking or not is a, a bit of a separate question. Then can the ADU be built without parking? So I don't know that, I think it might depend more on a, a case by case basis. I think in most situations, if all you have to do is find spaces for two cars, whether it's in a drive off the alley or, or in a driveway, I think this, the site would probably be able to, to meet that. But I'll defer to staff on that. But it, it does appear that that scenario you gave would be a two-part question. One is the, the fact that the detached house does not have any parking right now. Is that a legally non-conforming situation or is it just simply non-compliant? And then the second question would be as you add an ADU, it does not have to require parking for that unit, but it could not take away the parking that was provided for, for the house. Now that house, the, the scenario that was described earlier where someone could convert their garage, that can happen as long as those spaces are found elsewhere and typically in a driveway.
And so just based on what we hear from council at the study sessions and the way it's drafted, it would not require them to, you know, pour concrete and get two more parking spaces for the, the existing primary structure. Mainly because what we heard from council, I think there was a, a misnomer in the public that to get an ADU on your property, you have to bring your full property up to building code requirements, which is not the case. It hasn't been the case, but the code, it was a little bit unspecific. So we've, we've gone in and updated our, our code and some drafts to really reflect that it needs to meet property maintenance code. And there's not a parking requirement in property maintenance code. So the way it's drafted right now, no, it would not require the existing unit to come up to code. Now, if somebody was building an existing structure plus an ADU, so a brand new single family home and an ADU, yes, the single family home would have to meet the requirements, but the ADU, uh, the way it's drafted has no parking requirement.
And I do appreciate the property maintenance code clarification because that was one of those questions that came up. Do you have to bring up everything in the home to code and it's a different code, lower standard? Okay, uh, other questions or discussion on that, Michelle?
Yes, um, I also would like to point out to everybody that thanks to Brian, he did make that schedule of Denver and surrounding municipalities. There is not one single municipality that has, at least on this table, that has more one ADU allowed. And the only two entities or municipalities that require, that don't require a parking spot are Denver and Wheat Ridge. And Denver has very limited places where they will allow ADUs at all. So I think that if we get, if we do both of those things and allow multiple ADUs, it doesn't matter, I mean, on any of the zonings that we have. And also remove the parking lot restriction and remove owner occupancy removal, owner occupancy requirement. We're just setting ourselves up for what might happen. When we raised the bulk plane, this is now we're into Brooks territory. But when we raised the, the bulk plane in the two and three, that's where we ended up with all these really tall duplexes that our citizens are complaining about. And that was an unintended consequence. We didn't realize that. And so I'm just saying that if we do those three things, remove the owner occupancy requirement, remove the parking requirement and, and, you know, add it into all the other districts, I think that we're, well, especially up to three in the, in the MU districts. I think we're setting ourselves up for very unhappy citizens.
Nick, Michelle, others, Carl?
Yeah, the to have three ADUs, eight, an ADU is $200, $300,000 to build. The only reason that anybody, anybody would have three ADUs on their lot would be a developer. And the purpose of ADUs is to get affordable housing. That's not going to be affordable housing. It's going to be very high rent. I feel one, one ADU is fine per lot. If, if it's built for relatives or whatever, it's going to be a affordable housing probably. As far as interior ADUs, how many hundreds of people in Inglewood do that right now? They're renting out their basement, renting out a room. It's, it's being done now and it's, I don't really see why we classify it as an ADU when there, it's just somebody's renting out the basement now.
So where it crosses that threshold is having a separate kitchen. You know, you can have a bathroom, you can have 10 bathrooms in your house. It's not going to raise an eyebrow. But when you have separate kitchens, that's when you're starting create, create, to create separate living quarters for another family unit. I don't have a number on how many people rent out a bathroom or, or a bedroom, sorry, not a bathroom, an extra bedroom or their basement. But I knew though, I do know that I've probably been working on two different zoning violations for the last two months for people that have illegally converted basements. And, you know, they, they get turned into us by the most unique ways. Whether they're selling their home on Zillow and they put pictures up on Zillow that show two different basements or they, their Zillow ad says that they're a duplex or they have the mother-in-law suite. That's generally how they get caught and sent to us. If someone sees that, complains, it comes to us or their neighbor sees it. We had someone else that was caught through STR website. They were operating a permitted STR, but they were advertising through Airbnb and showed two separate kitchens and we received a complaint. So we don't have numbers on that, but we do see it quite often.
Another point is the owner occupancy. There's, there's a lady that's been coming to council meetings for two years and she lives down on Washington Street and she's got a, a rental house next door and the owner lives in Washington. And they're having, they have parties over there all the time. She gets trash in her yard. The cars park on her lawn. They throw beer cans everywhere. She's got litter everywhere. She's been complaining about that for two years and it's still going on. So unless you have owner occupancy, there's no way to control what's going to happen on that property.
Thank you, Carl. I, I think that's, it is an enforcement question, not necessarily a zoning question. And I think the allowance for whether that's a short-term rental or long-term rental, you can have a long-term rental and those people can have parties and do whatever it is that they want because they have a right to do what they want to do in, in their house.
Yeah, and this is one house. This is not, if, if this goes through, you could have, the, the purpose of this is to get affordable housing. So if, if this goes through and there's going to be a mass, I mean, a developer could buy up a block and take the whole block and just add as many ADUs as they can possibly add and rent, rent out the house. The ADUs just rent out everything.
I hear what you're saying. I, I want to try to make sure that we're emphasizing keeping the existing affordable housing that at least is there. And I don't see any other way of doing that unless we incentivize adding ADU as opposed to tearing down a house. Because if a developer wants to buy that house right now and put up three units, they can do that. So that, that's where I would go. I'm not sure. As we're talking about this, this is the conversations today. Eventually we're going to provide recommendations to council. Is, what is, before we go too far into one of, this is one of three, I think, major items, Chris, that you want to talk about. What is the intent today? What are we trying to get out of today?
This, ask us questions.
Just questions or we?
We're not, we're not making amendments right now.
Yep.
This is a work session. This is time for you guys to ask questions. At the end, I'm probably going to ask you, what do you want to see when this comes for adoption? As you've probably seen, if you've got a mailer or invites on your calendar, our, our next meeting is scheduled for July 11th. That begins the public hearing process for this. We, we are trying to get everything put together. We, we are trying to get everything put together through our, our assessment report and everything else for our staff reports to get everything to you. Um, my intention is that we will also print hard copies for you um and bring them to you, deliver them prior to the public hearings beginning. Um, so that if you're, you're like me, I keep my hard copy. I also keep my PDF on my desktop because it, it's easier to search. Um, but that's what tonight is, is for y'all to ask us questions, us to take information back, um get prepared for the adoption, um public hearings and then um we begin that process.
Great, thank you. Brenda?
Well, I think we need to um be neighborhood-specific, that we can cater these solutions to the kind of neighborhoods people want to keep, the kind of character they want to keep. Um, so for R2 and MUR3, you can have a duplex today. This just puts it in a different form. You might have, instead of a tear-down and units on top of each other and that very expensive developer solution that we've seen, I've got it on my block, I'm MUR3. It's a very ugly, tall structure. I mean, it is horribly tall. Um, maybe I could buy my neighbor's home and instead of tearing it down, just convert her garage and, or I don't know, another structure, but there's probably enough room. But we're really just, we're just trading out structures in MUR3 and R2. They're already zoned for multiple people. We're just giving them more options. And then as far as um the, we're allowing now for the first time, one ADU and R1, just one. And I, again, that parking situation might make it so that an elderly person would have to go upstairs above the garage and wouldn't have very good handicapped access. See, so that's why I like this.
Thank you, Brenda. Uh, Michelle?
I, I appreciate the fact that um people are looking at ADUs as, as um affordable housing and they are. But we're not going to solve the affordable housing problem with ADUs. They're one unit at a time or maybe up to three units. Affordable housing is going to be solved with subsidized housing close to the transit areas and that sort of thing, which means the government's going to have to come up some money, with some money. That's the only way that affordable housing is in, is reality, in reality is going to get fixed, not through ADUs. So um I appreciate Brenda, you mentioning that maybe we can do some uh special cutouts for some different zoning districts. And I would like to suggest that it, especially in probably R1A and R1B, that the owner occupancy requirement not be removed. Um, to me, that is the situation that what, is what Carl's talking about. It's true. It's code, code should be, uh code enforcement should be um more vigilant on some of these parties and things like that. But that's not the point. If you live in that neighborhood and that's happening over and over and over, I don't care how many times code, code enforcement shows up, you're still essentially losing access to your own personal private property because of what a neighbor is doing.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask um a clarifying question around that. And I'm sorry, Chris or um Brian, if you already spoke into that, but can you clarify the reason for removing the owner occupancy requirement, what that was motivated by?
City Council, uh Steering Committee or sub, or Study Sessions is where that came from. It didn't, it came from their study sessions on the topic to remove owner occupancy. Um, I can email y'all the meeting links where it was discussed, but I don't have that, their discussion right at the top of my, my brain right now. Um, but yes, that's where the direction came from, was out of City Council Steering Committee or City Council Study Sessions.
And to build off that, again, our role here is to recommend the UDC to City Council.
Correct. And so if there, there are amendments to be made, um that, that you all feel like you want to amend, um along with your recommendations, you would recommend, you know, approval with amendments, um similar to what you do with placing conditions on like a PUD. What I would, I would recommend is if, if as an individual, there's something that you want to discuss an amendment for prior to the next meeting, send it to us so we can help start to get the citations together. Because um I don't know if you've ever read some of our citations, but section sixteen five four AC3B um can get a little daunting if you're trying to flip through all your chapters. Um, but we can take that information and put it together and then we will present it back to the commission um at the meetings, at the public hearing. So let us, let us help you all um in any way that we can. But yes.
And, and I guess just to clarify then, is the intent to change any of the language as it stands right now before the meeting?
No. So there, there will be minor changes that you'll see and we'll capture those as well um as this goes through our legal department review and some final department reviews. We'll make sure and clarify anything that we've changed from what you're seeing today. We'll have uh another report that says here's what's changed, if anything has changed. That way you know specifically what we've done um through our attorneys and then through Public Works and Utilities and ourselves.
And then final question, at least I have as of now, if uh there's a recommendation to make a change or request to make a change, that would then have to be voted on with a majority recommending that before it would be passed on to, to council?
So there wouldn't be any changes. Again, you're just making a recommendation.
But with the recommend, in order to make a recommendation, would it have to have a majority?
Yes, it, the, any, any kind of amendment. So if you want to make a rec, so generally what we would do, and I can't say that we're going to do this specifically, is we would recommend to approve the full document. If there's a condition or some kind of change that you want, you would have to, you know, uh make a motion to amend something. That amendment would have to get approved. Then ultimately, any amendments that are approved through that recommendation, go to council. Any ones that are not approved, they don't go. And we'll, we'll have Vicky. She's out of the office on vacation this week, but we'll have her here to make sure that it's crystal clear uh come public hearing time.
Great, thank you. Uh, any further discussions on ADU?
Okay, then I don't know when to do this, but I think that it's a really good compromise area to ask that ADUs in R1A and B, just R1A and B be owner occupied.
The, I think that would be the next meeting, we, because the, the language will stay the same. Um, Brian will come prepared at the next meeting with the citation language that he is noting right now.
Yeah, so if, if there's anything like that, that you anticipate may be a recommendation or something like that, either let us know now or send it to us um over the course of the next few weeks so we can start preparing this. So it's, it's already written down for you, uh things like that. So we're not, I'm trying to redesign at the dais and, and do things like that and miss a section. So um if that's something that, that y'all want us to take a look at, we're more than happy to write it down and we'll, we'll go, go forward that way.
I appreciate your compromise, Commissioner Hubgin. And I think it's a, a good idea. I do think that, uh, you know, when you buy a house in R1, you expect everybody to have one house and one family for the most part. I mean, it could be an extended family and I appreciate you offering that as a compromise. I think that's a good idea. Thank you.
I'll, I'll also support that. Uh, I, I think we need to put the density in the right places and, and have the option to do that. But if R1 needs to have an owner occupancy to have that ADU, I would be supportive of that. I do want to make sure that I'm clarifying that in those other areas, uh R2, MUR3, trying to figure out a way to keep some of that existing stock. And if we need to add units for people to make it affordable as opposed to tearing them down, I just want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to support that. Okay, any other discussion on ADUs? All right, uh, number two, one hour down. So Carl will only going to be here for... Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, thanks. Um, so the second issue is small lot detached houses. This came up for, for two reasons. One, you allow them currently. So all of the R1 districts have um two different um types of lots beyond the, the normal lot size. So you have R1A, nine thousand square foot lot, R1B, seven thousand two hundred square foot lot, R1C, six thousand square foot lot, minimum by code. Now, obviously, lots of properties have larger than that, but the minimum by ordinance is that. All of those districts also have provisions for what's called a small lot or an urban lot. And there's just two different tiers in each district um that are anywhere between three thousand square feet or four thousand five hundred square feet, depending on which district you're in. Um, so that's in your code right now. The one, there's a footnote to those allowances. It says they're only allowed if they're existing already. So you can't create them anew. The second thing we identify was um the ones that do exist, um they exist in a particular format and pattern. They're usually um backs of lots adjacent to an alley, uh most often, um so a corner lot situation. Um, so rather than just say that only the existing ones can stay and they have to be and they're, they are only allowed if they're grandfathered, our thought was, well, let's allow them anew, but then identify the specific situation which makes them appropriate. Um, so then the second situation that would make them appropriate is something we explored with the Steering Committee and was mentioned, I believe, in the code assessment as well, as well, this idea of um courtyard patterns of housing. And this is essentially a, a, another strategy to say, um, let's keep small-scale neighborhood housing, but we can allow more units per, per property area. And so the courtyard pattern can be an efficient pattern, particularly when you have deeper lots and, and particularly alley-loaded um lots as you all have. Um, so the, the scenario would be um, would be to allow them to be created anew. So it's, it's based on your current grandfathered status, but it would be saying um corner lots could have them. And what we've done is we've gone through and created a, a front lot and a rear lot standard. So for example, in R1A, a nine thousand square foot minimum lot, what we've put in is if you subdivide the back half of your corner lot to have a, a side-street-facing house, um that would need to be three thousand minimum and the front would be six thousand minimum. So that's that nine thousand-foot lot being split into a, a minor lot and a major lot on it. And then R1B just uses that same kind of math scenario to take that seventy-two hundred minimum lot and split it that way. And the R1C does the same and um with the six thousand square foot lot and takes a two thousand back and a four thousand front. Um, so those are the corner lot locations. Um, then when we graduate up to R2 and MUR3, um since, again, since those districts already allow um multi-unit properties at three thousand square foot per unit, the idea was, well, let's just make that, that small lot that, that's called the urban lot now. Let's make it allowed anywhere in R2 and MUR3, since it's roughly equivalent to the same yield that you would get um in a multi-unit property as well. So again, the idea is smaller scale, um detached housing as opposed to um tearing down for larger building types. Um, one of, some of the design standards that come along with it to make sure it's um smaller scale and, and neighbor scales, reducing the height limit. Um, I think the Steering Committee brought up the idea of um taller, narrower homes and they weren't favored. So most of your existing patterns are typically one-story, but sometimes one and a half stories. So these small lots have a twenty-five-foot height limit, whereas right now under your current code, they have a thirty-two foot. The second thing would be to increase the lot coverage though, above the forty percent that it currently has because they're smaller and more compact, um to get a decent buildable area, it's between fifty and fifty-five percent lot coverage on those smaller lots. Um, and then the third, in the courtyard pattern, there are additional design standards regarding how you access the property, um how you treat the frontage and how you design the open space that makes sure it's compatible with the neighborhood as they go in as well. Um, and then the last, um reducing the impediments, just generally shifting from the grandfathered status to allow them to be created as new. And then again, in those multiple districts that are already um zoned for multiple um units, just taking that three thousand square foot per unit allowance and saying, well, that could be a detached house as well, rather than as, as it is now, they're just grandfathered in. Um, so I'll pause there for questions on the small lot options.
Thank you, Mr. Rooster. Any questions? Michelle?
You can tell that I was about to hit my button, can't you? I'm, so I'm trying to understand, I, I understand that there's a lot of these uh that are grandfathered in. But, and that's fine if we grandfather them in, but why do we want to, again, take an R1 lot and make it into two houses? I don't understand.
So part of the thought on this is, right now, the way the code is drafted, that R1 lot would be able to build an ADU, correct? So one of the other-
A whole new house on this one. We're not talking about ADUs anymore.
Well, the, so this is where we tie it in. So it would, they'd be able to build an ADU. The ADU would be a rental property. This would be a bill, an ability to build a for-sale product on a separate lot because you can't currently do that with an ADU. Um, so that, that's kind of where this came from. And it's something that we've seen all over town. We have quite a few of these, especially in the northern part of the city. Um, I went through before one of the Steering Committee meetings and I think I hadn't even made it past Hampden and I probably had about fifteen examples of these, these lots. You know, the corner lot, having the second house built in the back that faces the side street. So this was kind of tying, tying in some, some things that we see historically, um just with a new approach that we don't currently have. So again, it's trying to help, trying to provide another option for homeownership rather than just for a rental.
Thank you, Brian.
And so, and so you wouldn't necessarily be able to do this up and down the block, right? Right? This is, this one is only for corner lots.
In R1.
Right, in R1, except for the courtyard patterns. That again is another one that's geared towards homeownership. So there, there are lots that are subdivided. So you can still have one single family in each unit, um and then they can be sold off rather than just being, you know, something that's geared more towards rentals.
And I, I actually had a couple of questions about that on, on the courtyard side. Obviously, it needs to be a certain size lot. Is that typically going to end up having to be almost two lots that you would have to have together in order to make the courtyard situation feasible? Or there are lots that we have that are large enough to do that?
I think in most cases where we ran scenarios, it, it would have, to, to be able to do it on one lot, it would have to be a, a rather large lot. And I think your assessment of it, u-usually it's going to happen on two lots, is probably accurate unless there's existing lots that are double the minimum size. Um, and that would be for the smaller versions of the courtyard. So to get a courtyard of um upwards of more than five units on it, you're probably going to need to be combining um maybe even three lots in those situations. Um, and so the benefit, a-again, to the question of why would we do this strategy, is that it's, it's ensuring smaller-scale buildings and opportunities for ownership, as Brian mentioned. But doing it at a neighborhood scale in, in the, the, the R1 districts is the idea. But yeah, you're, you're, to back to your original question, it's, it's most likely two. And for anything more than four or five units, um it's probably going to be three lots to combine before you get to it. Because they, essentially what's happening is that small lot sta, is being applied, but you just don't have to front them all on the street. But you do have to front them on a courtyard and that courtyard is sized, that, that's additional space. Um, and, and so it's, it's not just that you have the lot. In fact, the picture we have here probably doesn't um accurately reflect that, that, that space around the courtyard is going to have to be is, it, it's essentially all of them sharing a, a front yard that becomes a common space.
Thank you. And I, I think the thought of, you know, density, people get upset at, but if we're trying to find the right density i- in the right places again and mimicking things that we have done in the past to try to get more people into our neighborhood. I'm in supportive in, again, the right ways. And you walk arounds, you know, north of Hampden, like you're saying, and they're quite frequently around on the corners. There's a, a house facing the main street and then a house facing the side street. Um, going back to the R2 and I'm your R3, um does that mean that some of these could be accessed from the alley only? And, and would you have to have access to it or could there be a walk east that would be provided?
Um, no, the current code, well, the, the code requires that all lots have access on a, on a front of a street. So um to, to do this in the um R2 district, you couldn't take the back half of a lot that's internally internally located and, and create a lot that doesn't have street access. That would be an example of where the ADU discussion prior um would be more effective and more important. They just couldn't subdivide it because it's an accessory unit. Um, so usually the narrower lots, um I, I think Brooke could probably fill any because he seemed to have the examples of most of them. They're really most often going to exist in, in a, there, you have a s, number of thirty-seven and a half foot wide lots. Um, and so those exist now and some of them might be um paired and, and built on as double. But that's the situation that would allow the smaller lots to be done everywhere in those. But that's the situation that would allow the smaller lots to be done everywhere in those districts.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Brooke, did you want to add on to that at all?
Oh, I think what Chris is alluding to is most lots in the R1C, let's say in the city of Inglewood are fifty feet wide. There are grandfathered lots that are thirty seven and a half. And there's some that are twenty five, not many. But what this change in dimensional requirements would allow is if you had a seventy five foot wide lot, even in the interior of a block, you could subdivide it into two thirty seven and halves. Which is a, if you've seen one, that it's, 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 it's a pretty appropriate. It, it doesn't look like a skull, a tall skinny type of build. There's a lot of thirty seven and a half foot lots in Wash Park. And so you, you don't notice it, but it's a little smaller than obviously a fifty and a little bigger than a twenty five. So it would allow those on an interior situation. Hence the minimum in an R1C of four point five or forty five hundred square feet. That would allow for thirty seven and a half feet of frontage.
Thanks. Carl?
I, I like the courtyard idea. I just not sure how you, you gotta have people in there that are gonna be compatible with one another, that can get along. If you have a courtyard, who's going to take care of the courtyard? Is it? And I've got neighbors that mow their lawn twice a summer. So if you got a courtyard and you got one, one or two people that don't take care of their lawns and how do you, how do you work that? But, and then basically right now, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking in the future for courtyards, right now for affordable housing, you cannot scrape an existing house and build something and have it affordable. You just can't do it.
Unless there's some subsidies and things like that, I, I would not just, you're not going to scrape a house to build something more affordable.
Assistance.
Yeah. But that's again, why, how do we figure out, maybe this is again, one of those ways for, I, I think the, the courtyard might not be an option for that, but splitting off a back unit could sell that to somebody to build a smaller house, right? And if we can come up with those ideas to be able to support that, I'm, I'm on, I'm on board, on board with that. Other questions on the small lots? Yes?
No, I was just gonna say, I was looking on the map because I knew I'd seen one of these, two forty nine East Oxford. So you're going to the Goodwill. Go to the Goodwill and head east on Oxford. You see this little guy? He's on the corner. He's on the side. He's real small like this. And see how, I'm pretty sure this is our one. Yeah, this is our one, isn't it? It's not, it's almost by Duncan. It's Oxford and a coma. I think that's a coma, two forty nine east, yeah.
I think you're talking two forty nine west.
Yeah, I know, isn't that? Yeah. Yeah, remember that car? There's a junker old, there's that old Ford sitting on the side. In regards to your question, Carl, I just, I don't know where somebody would put this anyway, so I don't have a problem with allowing it. I just, I can't see any lots in Inglewood. You know, and like I said, I'm in our, in my, MUR3. And we have mostly apartments and, you know, there might be some big lots on the north side of town, you know, northwest in the Dartmouth area. You know what I'm talking about? Up in there. Those are a lot of big lots over there that something like this would be very useful for, I think. That's all.
Thank you, Brendan. Not exactly sure where you're referring to, but I think I know the areas. And I've seen quite a few, I know, north, north of Hampton. Yeah. Uh, any other conversation on the small lots that we want to bring up here, Carl?
Uh, one thing on the, the reduced height. Again, I'm pushing on the solar. Actually today is the longest day of the year, solar wise. And in the winter, it's the, the shortest day of the year and it's, the, the sun angle is twenty six degrees. So you have a shadow of any, of a twenty foot wall, you have a shadow of forty feet, which pretty much covers your neighbor. So I'm still pushing on the solar, the reduced height of buildings and their effect on the neighbor. I don't, I have no idea how you would write that up. I'm sure Chris has ran into that sometime of, around his experience. Boulder has regulations on that. But it's a, to, to have somebody come in, if, if you have solar panels or a garden or whatever and you're, and you're on your lot and you come, have a neighbor come in and build a two-story building three foot from your property, you're gonna, you're gonna be in the shade all the time. I mean, that, that happened down. I can't remember how many years ago it was, but there was a twenty five foot lot that was being developed from a Texas company and they were here in council trying to get approval for it. And I thought, there's no way they're gonna get that. And they didn't. And it was built. And it's actually just went up for sale a couple of weeks ago. And, but you, you go by there, the, the neighbor was an older lady that she eventually moved because she had no, all, all her south facing windows were a wall. You look out your window and there's a wall or you don't, you don't see anything.
Yeah. And I, I, I think that's concerning. You can also put a tree up that would block solar as well. I mean, I think there's different variations of it and I, again, I think I don't think you can build three foot off the lot line, but you know, I think that's why we're reducing this from a thirty two foot to a twenty to a twenty five foot.
If you want to live in an apartment, that's fine, live in an apartment. But if you want to live in a house, have a yard, garden, uh, you should have the right to do that.
Next call. Anything else? All right, that was quicker, only twenty minutes on that one. Moving along.
The, the next topic is the multi-unit buildings. So now we're moving to the R2 and MUR3 districts exclusively. So this topic deals with what, what can be termed missing middle, but neighborhood scale, multi-unit buildings. So you can see on the map where they're, they're currently allowed and, and that wouldn't change through this. The, the one change we are doing is, really, really it's a, a twin strategy. Essentially where you currently have the, as I mentioned with that small lots, these districts that are zoned for multiple units have a default setting of three thousand square foot per unit. So you want three units. Now you have a nine thousand square foot lot. You want four units. You have a twelve thousand square foot lot. And what that's essentially doing is making the lots bigger, the buildings bigger. Because people are maxing the building footprint and i- in our estimation, it's making things larger than they need to be, but you're not getting a good unit yield. So what we've done is we've reduced the per unit lot size for these building types. And then in exchange for that, we've put maximums rather than minimums on the lot sizes or the lot frontages in most cases. So that, really that twin strategy is what's at work in the R2 and MUR3 districts. And essentially it wouldn't allow anything new that's not already allowed. So duplex, triplex, quadplex and row houses is essentially what we're talking about in the R2 districts. And then introducing apartments in the R3 districts. The, the subtle changes we are doing is that, again, focusing on the corners and the ends is in each district, we introduce the ability to do kind of the next increment up, if you will. So in the R2A, it's currently just a duplex district and it would be under this code. The, the change would be with the reducing the per unit lot size and capping the building type that we would say on corner lots, you can, you can introduce those buildings in R2A. And then in R2B, introducing the smaller apartment building on corner lots in, in those districts. So essentially it's a, it's a strategy to get what's could be termed gentle density. In other words, smaller neighborhood scale buildings, but more units than otherwise could have been allowed. So the building scale wouldn't change from what's currently allowed. And in fact, it might come down in some cases due to the maximums on the lot size and the maximum on the frontages, but the unit yield could go up. So we're, what we're doing is leveraging the capacity of areas already zoned for that. It's R2, R2 and MUR3. So let's get more units out of that within the same or similar scale buildings. The other point to remember, the second bullet point, th- this goes along with the expanded options for ADUs in these districts. So again, those ones that are zoned for this, but have a single family house on it. That ADU strategy would, would give them options as well. And it's all promoting lower scale, smaller scale buildings and development. The last strategy really goes beyond your current residential districts, the MU3 and MUC. So essentially if I go back to the map, the corridors and your commercial areas, you currently allow residential in those as well. And so we've just made a clarification that if you're doing a residential only project in areas zoned for commercial, that it, it should follow these MUR3 C standards as well. So again, introducing neighborhood opportunities in areas zoned for commercial right now. Improved neighborhood character. So again, this, this sort of completes our strategy of arranging the building types in these two zoning districts, the R2 and the MUR3 districts. But basically four categories, small lot, detached house, what we would call house scaled multi-unit buildings, anywhere from one to four units. And then neighborhood scale, the things like row houses, multiplexes. And then two categories of apartments, a medium and a large apartment for, for those MUR3 A, B and C districts. So across those four main building types, the neighborhood design, the, the neighborhood character strategy is even though they might be different building types and different graduated scales, they all exhibit the same attributes in terms of streetscape and frontages, building massing, building design and open space. And that's what will allow these, these districts to fit into, on the edges of your R1 districts where they currently are located. With the building massing, the key point, and we'll talk about this more when we get to the neighbor designs strategy slide is we did adjust the, the bulk, bulk plane to add a new layer for MUR MU, I'm sorry, R1C. And then we ought, the bigger shift is to add a front and rear bulk plane with the rear being the lower scale bulk plane. The second big change there is currently buildings with five units or more, which are allowed in R2B or the MUR3 districts. They don't have any massing standards at all. And so this would add a, a standard that those buildings have to be stepped back over the second story. So breaking down the mass of even those larger buildings closer to the lot lines. And then throughout the code, in, in some areas, we've reduced the building height from thirty two to thirty feet. Although the ones that are zoned and planned for, for three stories do go up to forty still. But that was just something that was done throughout all of the districts with regard to building massing. Uh, so that, I'll pause there for any discussion on the multi-unit buildings.
Yeah, can you go back to the previous page?
Yes.
So on a six foot small lot, six thousand square feet to twelve thousand square feet. This is, this is today's or is this going forward? This is five to eight units. You can go thirty to forty feet high.
So that would be, that would be going forward. The thirty feet would only be in the R2 districts. The forty feet would be in the MUR3 districts. That's current, those height limits, it was the exception of the ones where we have thirty, it's coming from thirty two down to thirty. The ones that are forty, you currently have a district that allows sixty and we're bringing that down to forty in the, in the MUR3 districts. And you wouldn't, you would only get the taller buildings when you move to the medical M district or the mixed use business district. And that's where it would graduate up to the sixty feet. But currently one of your districts allows up to sixty. As far as the, the unit yield though, that's the where, that's really where the change is being done. So right now, that's a good example, that smaller lot, because a six thousand to twelve thousand square foot lot. Right now, the six thousand one would only get two units. The twelve thousand one could get four. But it's going to be the same building size. So by bringing that down, we're saying, well, in, in, in zoning districts that are already zoned for multiple units, that scale and that size of building could easily get five to eight units in it and, and not have any different impact on the neighborhood because it's the same building type.
Oh, it's an incentive to put more units in the small lot of MUR3. Do I understand that right?
That's correct. And more importantly, to cap it as well. So right now, if someone wanted to do eight units, they would do a twenty four thousand square foot lot and then the building would, would be scaled to a twenty four thousand square foot lot. So that would be the one that you, you couldn't do when you're in the district that just is allowing the small building. You'd have to graduate up to the MUR3B or C to do those larger scale buildings.
Thanks. Any other thoughts, questions? Thought I had a question here. One thing that I think is somewhat related to this is when, when does it change from a small scale development to a large scale development? What's that acreage?
Are you referring to the building types themselves, the building?
No, for the, I think for the submittal type, it is where it would come. And I might have misread that or misheard that earlier. I thought there was a, a distinction between small scale and large scale and I wasn't able to find that in the.
I, I think he's talking about the difference between a plan unit development and something similar to the TSA specific plan.
Yeah.
Yes. So the, if someone were, those would be things that aren't, if someone was proposing a PUD, in other words, they weren't going to develop according to these standards that we're talking about for one reason or another. And therefore wanted to rezone their property based on a plan. Your current code has a, a limit of a half acre in non-residential districts and a minimum of one acre in residential districts. And those are for kind of privately generated plans that would adjust their standards. So we're keeping that the same. The improvement we think we're making is you base that plan off of these types that we're talking about under the general districts and then you need to justify, why do you need to make this change? And the idea is we want, we don't want people to be resorting to these planned districts just to make up their own standards. We want them to resort to it if there's, they're running into either unanticipated things that are, are good or better ideas or, or things that just make sense for that particular site, do it, do its uniqueness. But that would be the threshold for the small scale PD. The larger scale one is, is Brian mentioned, that's the TSA district right now. But one of the things we discussed mainly with the, the mixed use and the commercial districts that those areas could benefit from a, a more public multi-large scale area plan. And you could basically calibrate your development code to that plan as well, if you wanted to.
Thank you. I, I, that, some of these items in here just made me kind of think of that question. So I wanted to get that clarification, but not sure if there's any other thoughts on this multi-unit slides. All right, well, let's move it on.
The next one is neighborhood character. So this would apply throughout all the R1, R2 and MU, R3 districts. Essentially what we did, we, we took a lot of your existing standards and grouped them into three main categories, frontages, how does your building and site relate to the, the streetscape? Building design, the, the, the massing of the box itself, and then the, the details, the composition of how that goes together. So there's, there are currently areas where you might have some standards or you might have some incentives through exceptions to promote some of these things. And so by breaking them down into a few simple elements, we felt like we could go ahead and convert them to standards. Again, it's based on To standards. Again, it's based on this overall approach to, as we lessen. Or, or add more options for use or in the residential situation, a mix of building types. Increasing the standards on the form. So again, that's the example in the M U R, or the R two and the M U R three districts. Regulating that form and scale of the building. So maximums rather than minimums is important to make sure there's compatibility there. And then the last stage is to ensure that they are, all of those types have compatible design with the, these key elements of, of the neighborhood. Frontage design, building design, streetscapes, landscape and open space. So again, this is the, one of the slides from our, both the public presentations and our steering committee discussions that. We really are thinking this, of this neighborhood character of two co-equal parts. Much of the neighborhood character is happening in the public realm, the streetscapes and, and frontages that. Maybe aren't owned by the property owners, but through development, they can make enhancements and improvements to it. And certainly what they're doing on the private lot impacts that in terms of access to the property. And then we shift to the, the private side and, and make sure that some of those things are, are compatible across building types as well. So overall, again, strategy is, it take those common characteristics across all of those four main building groupings. You can see on the screen which ones are paired. Mainly to the R one districts, which ones begin to allow a few more things to be introduced in the R two districts. And then the broader range of building types allowed in the M U R three districts. From there, we focus on streetscapes, making sure that back in chapter three. As you recall, we have standards for walkable and complete streets. So through development, if it's a, particularly if it's a larger scale development, there might be opportunities to steer the streetscape towards those characteristics. But the bigger thing is just to make sure that we're putting in street trees where there's opportunities. From there, front, frontages requiring a front entry feature. Right now, there's just an, an option or an incentive to allow it. In other words, it can encroach into the front setback. And it doesn't count towards your lot coverage. We are continuing that, but what we're also saying is every building needs to have one of these features. It doesn't have to be a porch. We build in options for four different things, a porch, a stoop, a courtyard entrance. Or a, what's, what we would consider a terrace for those multi-unit buildings that are, that are built closer to the, the street. And basically just have a small garden yard or something in the front there. So there's four different options for having those entry features. But again, getting those buildings to put social spaces on the street. And less car space on the streets. And then landscape standards to accompany that. With regard to building design, three main requirements, the bulk plane is your current requirement. I mentioned on the other slide how we were adjusting it for the one to four unit buildings, having a, a front and rear bulk plane. As well as adding in that new fifteen foot layered bulk plane for the MU, or for the R one C, excuse me. And then adding some kind of massing bulk plane for the five plus unit buildings. So the, that's usually going to be in the R two B or the M U R three districts. Where there currently isn't a standard. You have a current requirement for articulating of the front buildings that's based on the linear footage that every twenty five feet building should. Reflect some architectural features that break a building into increments. So we're, we're continuing that, but we've added some more specificity for what. Strategies would accomplish that. And then lastly, a requirement for windows and doors on, particularly on the frontages as well. So preventing. Basically preventing buildings from having their side facing the fronts of streets as we've seen in some of the, the lesser desired examples. And then the last part to round it out is the landscape and open space. It's current, it's, you're open space in residential districts is based off of the lot coverage standard and we would continue to do that. There's a standard that goes with each of these building types. It says you, you can't have more than X percent of your lot as lot coverage. And that would include non-building elements as well, with some limited exceptions. And so we're continuing that with some slight adjustments. But then for larger scale projects that, over certain units that they would have to provide some type of. Common space or social space in addition to just the lot coverage standard. And, and again, trying to. Tie that into larger civic spaces in neighborhoods as well. So I'll pause there for any questions. I know that encompass a lot of things that we've talked about throughout the process. So. It's, it's, the idea was to be fairly comprehensive, but also try to, to simplify and distill some of these standards into a few key things. That all building types must do.
Any questions initially? I, I have a, a couple of things here. So on the frontages for the entry features, social spaces, if you will. When you're looking at, you know, what tends to be, um, slot homes built basically all the way up to the back of walk. Is that? Door entry space considered? A feature, is that an entry feature? Is there going to be additional requirements on, on something like that? To have it set back a little bit?
Yeah, the, the building itself would have to meet the, the setbacks for the district. So I, I, I think in most cases. That's going to default to, to twenty five feet back. There might be so, a few instances where we would allow them up to fifteen feet. But from the back of the lot. I think the bigger question you bring up is for the ones that are facing or orienting towards an inward word courtyard. Or something like that, if it's a multi-unit building. There needs to be a more human scale pedestrian entrance on that frontage. So. Although the entry to the building may be back and off to the side. The standards would require an architectural feature that's connected to the street. So that would be one that's going to either lend, I think we did some, some. Well, I, I, I have some hidden slides. Let me jump ahead real quick because I, if I jump out of this presentation, I think I have a good example to. To, to show. That we use with the committee. On this example, so. You can see on, on this side, even though the entrance may face here, there's something connecting to the street. Or if it's an internal area in here, there's some, some type of space in an architectural feature that connects to the street there. So in our mind, those types of things would satisfy the requirement, even though the building is, is side oriented.
And those are showing that fifteen foot setback that you're talking about?
Correct, correct.
Any other questions on that? One of the things that also jumped out when you were starting to talk about this is, I believe there is kind of loopholes in previous. Zoning that, you know, if you could squeeze in somehow more units than there was guidelines for, you could basically do anything. Have we closed those loopholes?
Yes, I believe so. Because again, all of these standards apply to, across all four scales of buildings. So even the moderate and large scale apartments are going to apply. And the specific one is that there was no bulk plane standard, which, which I, I think is probably thinking that, well, that's appropriate because. The, the zoning district and the, allowed for more than five units. So you're usually thinking an apartment building that can have a more boxy design. But what we're adding is that, based on the, the, this relation to the streetscape and the relation to the side. Anything over two stories should be, either have an additional step, setback or be stepped back an additional ten feet. That can, that ten foot limit is also accounting for. It, it could account for social space on the building. So an outside deck or rooftop deck. But again, these are, these are zone districts that are already zoned for a forty foot height limit and a multiple unit building. So that would be something that would be new, that's not required right now. Right now, under this, under the current code, it could essentially just go. Straight up at the side setback line.
And, and Chris, are there additional buffer yard requirements for certain multifamily projects that would come in that we don't currently have?
I don't think there's necessarily a buffer yard requirement. I think certainly some elements of those buildings are going to trigger in the landscape standards. Are going to trigger things that need to be screened from adjacent property. But as far as a standard for. If an apartment is next to this building that needs a, a, a buffer, there isn't that. Usually we're dealing with districts that allow those building types anyway. So there's not a, a sheer separation on a lot by lot basis. Unless it's a particular site element that's triggering a buffering, a screening requirement such as, you know, mechanical equipment. Enclosure, a parking area would certainly trigger that.
So there is one instance in here. If you have a, a common boundary between a multi-unit project with ten or more units and a detached home. The multi-unit project is required to provide a type two buffer. So that's a ten foot buffer width with some landscaping requirement in it. So, you know, I, I just want to reiterate what Chris is saying. There, there are, you know, this is a, a lot of blocks put together. The, no, not one of these topics that we're providing tonight is going to tackle all of our issues on its own. But when we start to put, you know, the, the land use requirements mix in with the form of the buildings and the landscape requirements. I think it helps to start, it starts to solve a lot of the issues that we've been seeing in our community and that we've heard from our community.
Yeah, appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions on the neighborhood design? All right, moving, moving on. If there's more, was that, is there more to move on to? I think so.
There's just two more points. The, now we're shifting out of residential into the non-residential. So the. The M districts, the medical mixed use districts, and then the M U B mixed use business districts. So you can see them depicted on the map here. Applies somewhat to industrial districts, but to a, a lesser degree because. To the extent those areas are continuing to be used as industrial, there's a, a lesser standard. That, of the types of things we're talking about here. So again, mainly focusing on the relationship of projects to streets and streetscapes. Currently, all of the standards that we have in here regarding non-residential design. Come from one or more of your zoning districts, but not all of them do it in a, a comprehensive or strategic way. So for example, the idea of required building frontages, in other words, your building needs to occupy. A certain percentage of the lot with a street wall. That only appears in your, your M districts, but doesn't appear in your M U B districts. Where arguably it might be more important in those districts. And I think it's just a function of the districts being written over a different time. Similarly with minimum transparency, there's a requirement in the M districts. But it only applies to the ground level and there's nothing addressing other levels and there's nothing being addressed in, in the M U B districts. So essentially, again, on that idea of getting more flexible with use. Restricting the scale and form to, to consistent patterns and then emphasizing these elements of design, essentially the same. Strategy and pattern that we use for residential, but having a different twist on them in the non-residential. Since, what we did was we, we packaged all of the standards that you see, a, a front building line. Where you place your building, so your, your setback. A required front building line, how much of that line needs to be occupied by the building? With some limited exceptions. And then the rest of the site, how much of the site could be access? Driveways or, or parking location along the frontage or to the side of the buildings. And then last element of landscape and streetscape. And essentially what we've done is we've, we've packaged all those in four types based on the, the quality and caliber of your street. So frontage A. Being the most pedestrian oriented, high required front building line. Close building line placement, so a, a build two line at, along the street. And then very limited and restricted in the access and parking locations. And then as you move to frontage D over on the opposite side. The landscape and the buffer and the screening becomes more important. The, the elements of the building less important because it's removed from the street. So you have all of those situations now. So what we did was we, we put them into a system. That allows you to make better decisions based on the context of the property itself. One of the subtle changes we did make was regard to that front building line. Most of the, the districts now have a zero to five foot line. And the M districts have a zero to ten foot line. So in other words, it's saying your, your building has to be placed within that location. And then you, you didn't have very clear paths to the situations where you wouldn't require that, that you might find over here in front of C and D. We've shifted that to a five to fifteen foot. That's primarily to account for the idea that some of these, some of the locations where you might be a building. May not have a sufficient streetscape along it. And so we want to give the opportunity for. People to complete some of those pedestrian spaces in that frontage area. Or perhaps even dedicate that to the public if they wanted to. In, in that scenario, but putting the buildings five to fifteen feet rather than zero to five or zero to ten allowed for that opportunity. Certainly, we, we already have a pre-built in exception that in cases where they're going on along a. Already complete street like you might have on the thirty three hundred to thirty five hundred blocks of Broadway. They can be built to that zero foot line if there's an established pattern. So that's built into the code already. And then similarly with the building elements itself, limiting blank walls, having a entry features every certain. Amount of spacing, requirements for transparency on first and upper stories and then a materials list. Again, a, a sliding scale for that based on how close the building is to the street. So the zero to ten being the, the, the most. Strict in terms of having more features, more transparency, more entrances. This middle scale that has a lesser degree and then the, the back where. You're kind of planning on, on larger scale buildings where it's normal for them to not have as much articulation and, and transparency and entrances. So I won't go through all of this, but again, it's, it's the idea of basing the design on the context. So again, having options for different contexts back to that flexibility. But within those contexts, having some very specific standards and some simple standards on each of these four main elements was the, the key strategy.
Thank you, Chris. Any thoughts, conversation on that? Go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, I just have a quick question and maybe there isn't an answer, but maybe staff can help out. If we implement all of these, is this going to reduce the number of PUDs or increase the number of PUDs?
With the changes that we're talking about now. It's hard to gauge. The changes to parking that we've made, we've had some folks that. That I think it might help reduce the number of PUDs that they'd have to do. The parking changes now are geared more towards a per unit. So I don't know if you've looked at the parking changes. Right now, where, where it's pretty much a blanket statement. I think it's one point seven spaces per unit. Is that right? Well, now the new code actually says, well, if you're a one bedroom or studio, you have to park this. Two bedroom is this, is your requirement, three bedroom or more is this, this is your requirement. I think that is going to help alleviate a lot of the issues. Rather than having that blanket parking requirement. Other items I think may help alleviate PUDs. Most of them, to be honest, at least just looking at them, a lot of them have been driven by the park. And then there's also still some tie-ins to some of the affordability discussions that we had with council. As far as if, if they provide a certain number of affordable units, they can reduce parking. Or there's also transit, transit station. Parking requirements if they're within so many feet of a transit or quarter mile or half mile, I think it is. Then there's some reductions in parking. So from that aspect, I think it would reduce the number of PUDs that we see. It gets hard to gauge if they're trying to request other variances. But the majority of them, that is, that's one of the key things that they're seeking is a reduction or change in their parking requirements.
I, I would agree that it's, it's difficult to, to gauge that, but I would, I would also agree with Brian in that. By reducing slightly some parking requirements. You're going to, you know. Eliminate some incentives for going for a PUD, but a lot of PUDs are also based on. Say doing residential and an industrial zone. So those would still come forward. But I agree with Brian on that aspect of, of the parking. And then lastly, I think if somebody comes in with a PUD and they're, because they're trying not to meet this stuff. I don't know that that's going to be received well because the premise of a PUD is we want to do this. In a location where maybe we either can't or we want to reduce parking somewhat. But in exchange, we want to do these other things that make the building better, that make the site better. And so to do a PUD and fall below our normal standards of the code for landscaping and. Transparency and these other building design items, I don't think would, would fly very well. So. I, I could see the PUD requests. So I, I could see the PUD requests staying the same or going down.
That was actually going to be one of the requests that I had is that if there is, I think, PUD or language that could be added to the PUD requirements that whatever they're trying to convert to, if they're going from industrial to multifamily, that they have to meet those requirements for landscaping and for any of these place making things. I think what happened a lot previously was they're like, well, we're doing better than industrial. It's like, okay, great, but that's not really what you're trying to put in. So I'm not sure if that language has been added or could be added to allowance for PUDs.
Yeah, I do think there's some language in there about sort of better than or equal to.
Well, and I think Chris's inclusion of residential projects that are allowed in commercial districts have to meet the M U R C three standards gives us a much, much better baseline. I think if you'll go back to the Sam's Auto PUD, we, we had them make that comparison as part of their project. Cause we had heard in the past, you know, well, they're only comparing themselves to industrial. You know, that's apples and oranges. They only have to do 10% or, you know, these small numbers. So yeah, then the last PD we had them provide that. But going forward, I think with, with some of the changes, we're going to have a better baseline to compare projects to.
Great.
Um, and we've only had, to my recollection, a couple of commercial PUDs. One being the synergy building across from Swedish and the other being grow and gather whatever restaurant. But do, but of course we're anticipating, we're hoping for much more extensive commercial development around the city center. So will these help or hinder the redevelopment of everything around here?
So on my end, I think, at least from what we've heard from some members of the public, or some of the parking exceptions are really going to help. Right now, we don't have the ability to allow commercial uses to take advantage of what parking is provided on street for them. Meaning that they have to park everything on their site. Some of the other processes are kind of daunting. Some, some revisions that we have in here, especially geared towards parking. Some of them make more right-sized parking requirements. So you'll see there's different requirements depending on the size of a restaurant. Cause we have some folks, a small takeout and delivery restaurant, you know, something really small scale may not need the same requirements as something that's 10,000 square feet. So there's some changes in there that I think would allow, allow businesses a little bit more flexibility. And then I think some of the changes that have been made to the land use table also will allow some flexibility, especially in looking at mixed-use projects that we've now identified more. I, I keep calling it like a right-sized aspect or a right-sized approach to retail that you might allow in a mixed-use project or a restaurant that you might want to see in a mixed-use project instead of requiring. You know, they're either currently not allowed in certain districts where mixed-use projects are. This would allow smaller scale, you know, restaurants to go into mixed-use or smaller scale retail stores to go into mixed-use. And one of the things that I, I like, just in reading through this, and I know it's, it's been a very big trend, is a change to, let me see if I can find the land use. I think it's more towards. Hold on one second. Chris, if you want to add something to it, let me look this land use up and I'll, I'll come back to mine.
Okay, yeah, and I think that's an important strategy overall was to, we found areas where your current code was making distinctions from, from very specific land uses, but there was no real difference. In other word, it was allowed in the same districts across categories. So those areas we would compress into a general land use category rather than have them broken out into five different uses. Cause they were treated exactly the same across all districts. But in some cases, we might take a, that category and then break it by scale into, you know, for lack of a better term, a small, medium and large based on the, the square footage or the size of the building. And that's what Brian's referring to is the right sizing that we did. So adding flexibility by being more general, but adding context by being specific on the scale and of the uses.
And then, so the land use that I was looking for that's due to us is something called a, it's in our manufacturing section. It's called loaded artisan. So if you think about folks that do small scale, maybe somebody that makes their own candles. It's really difficult for us to classify those uses now without sending them into something that's more a, a manufacturing or industrial use. In fact, we've talked to somebody that's on Broadway right now about this, this very specific use because it's an issue for them right now. But there, there's subtle changes throughout this that I think are going to be very beneficial in the long run. As far as like the commercial design requirements being an issue, I've worked in cities with them and I've worked in cities without them. It never seemed to slow anybody down. In fact, the majority of the time when they hear that we don't have requirements like this, they're, okay, let's, we'll just keep going. You know, they build it into their projects. But for, from a planning standpoint, I think it's much more beneficial to have these requirements than to not.
Chris, can you go back one or two? Yeah, actually, one more slide. I think it's interesting. I want to try to maybe discuss for very short time. Frontage A and frontage D, I believe frontage D is the King Supers. They're basically one block apart. And are there areas that we want to, you know, in, if it's a D now on Broadway? For, you know, promote it becoming more like a, or do we cover that within the thirty-three hundred to thirty-five hundred block South Broadway where we have different design standards, different requirements there? Or do we want to extend that on Broadway or Old Hampton? I think in, in some places that might maybe even South Broadway that we want to maybe change a little bit of the character of that street front from being some of the shops and the way they're situated now, maybe that R C try to push more for a B or an A.
Yeah, and I'll go first and then let, let staff kind of round it out. But our, our strategy and our approach is we can see in your code, like, so for example, right now, the MU districts require your building to be zero to 10 feet from the building frontage. So front, the, the King Supers isn't meeting that. There's things in there that then they, you can find a path through exceptions on how you would not do that. So the, our first threshold is to, let's, let's set the default towards what the district was intended for. So frontage A and B in the mixed-use districts, frontage C and D in the industrial districts is an easy distinction. The second thing is what you're kind of alluding to, what type of street and streetscape you're on is going to be pretty critical to what makes sense as well. And so we have things in the code to help determine that. And then the third is to go, okay, now if we're going to make exceptions, what do we do in its place? And you can kind of see in each of these cases on the C and D, they're actually done quite well for a C and D frontage there. You know, they have a vertical wall, which is something that's in your current code to create that streetscape. And in this one, it's a fence and landscape area, but this portion of the building over here does front the street. So these were kind of two really prototypical, but well-done examples of where you would accept the more car-oriented pattern. I think the other part you're getting to is we do see this as a planning tool as well going forward. Although that you don't have, you know, specific areas mapped out, certainly as you do capital improvements to improve certain streetscapes. There's going to be another cue to say like, yeah, on, on these streets that have had a streetscape improvement, have on-street parking. We wouldn't accept a C and D frontage. We would require an A and B. Or to the, the, what was mentioned earlier with the downtown plan, you could see laying out an entire plan where you map out your B and C frontages through those specific plans as well.
Thank you, Chris, for that clarification. Do we still have the requirement, I believe it's like the thirty-three hundred, thirty-five hundred block of Broadway and Old Hampton? That has, you have to have commercial in the main floor or is that going to be sunset?
Yeah, that's being retained. Essentially, we, what we mentioned earlier with the, all of the MU and, and M districts allowing residential only subject to the M U R three C standards. So in other words, you could do a, a ground floor apartment that is not allowed on the thirty-three hundred through thirty-five hundred. So any residential in these areas has to be in a mixed-use building.
And then there's, I think there's an additional design requirement that in those same blocks on Broadway, there's a step back similar to what we have. That it is, it's an attempt to try to keep that small town downtown feel rather than allowing a seven-story building right that fronts Broadway in those blocks. It would, you know, there's a, there's a limitation on the height, then it has to step back X amount of feet and then it can go up.
And you're saying that would be the case on, on Old Hampton also?
It's just on the Broadway.
Just on Broadway.
I, I don't, I don't know that we have any requirements for Hampton that we do for Broadway.
No, I guess to say it a different way. I believe we're removing the commercial, the, the 50% of the ground floor commercial requirement from all M U B two areas in the city. And it's never been necessarily a requirement in the M districts. The only place that's retaining it is the thirty-three, thirty-four and thirty-five hundred blocks of Broadway, which are actually M U B one. They're not even M U B two. Am I correct on saying that, Chris?
Yes, correct.
And then the M two, which would be Old Hampton, at least up to Logan, would not have that requirement either.
No.
And would they now have a step back requirement? So you wouldn't have that vertical building going up or is that still going to be allowed in that district?
I believe the M dis- go ahead.
Oh, it has a current one at, I want to, I probably overstepped because you might know off the top of your head, Brooke. But I think the current one was at 60 feet. It has to step back at least 20 feet. But we, we're, we're retaining that as is. It wasn't a major point of emphasis or discussion to, to alter that, but that's being retained as is.
And again, I think, you know, in certain applications in the medical area, it would make sense. I was just making sure I was understanding that because, you know, the, some of those new buildings are pretty vertical and pretty, they're much right up at the back of, back of walk there. Okay, any other points of conversation here? All right, Chris, anything else that you wanted to touch on?
Yeah, one last topic. I'll make it quick since I know it's getting late in the evening for everyone. So the last major topic that the steering committee discussed was sustainability. We feel due to all of the larger scale things of transit accessible, leveraging density near transit areas and commercial areas, making things more walkable, mixed-use pedestrian scale, we're hitting most of the large-scale sustainability things that a, a city can do, we're making either enabling it or requiring it. So when you get down to the site and building scale, it does become a little bit trickier to implement sustainability. So with the steering committee, we talked about it in terms of this idea of require, promote, enable, coordinate. So in, in the air, at, at the very least, down in these last two categories, we didn't want things that are required in this code to either become a barrier or to not take advantage of sustainable practices helping, that are coming out of non-development code related things. And that primarily deals with the building code of which the, the city is advancing on, on a separate track. But essentially what we've set up that is that through the alternative compliance process and criteria, both the residential and non-residential sections have what's called sustainable site and building guidelines. And those, so those are additional criteria that where if you prove you're meeting certain benchmarks in these sustainable practices on the left, that, and, and there's a standard that's not allowing you to achieve that, that, that can be a justification for an adjustment of the standard to allow the, the best practices and the sustainability realm to, to be implemented. Other than that, a lot of the site design things with regard to regionally appropriate xeric plants, all those types of things are, are being implemented as, as things that are promoting. So there's, there's either incentives or requirements for the, the sustainable practice.
Awesome. Any questions or conversation? I do have one item that is related to this. I was working with a neighborhood city or neighboring city that was running into an issue where they were trying to accept land adjacent to an existing park, but it wasn't zoned as a park. And therefore they either had to go through a zoning change or if we allowed park as a use by right would make things easier. I don't know if that is something that's already in our code or not, but I don't know if anybody would object to allowing parks as a use by right on any zone. I don't know if you've seen that at all, Chris.
Yeah, I would, don't recall at the top of my head where we're at on that. But essentially we kind of think of that as, we, we very rarely put that in as a land use. It's more of a civic space, whether it's public or common. So we would typically allow it in all districts as part of, just like you would a street. And it may be common space or it may be public space. So that's my initial inclination is say, yeah, that would be allowed. It wouldn't require zone change. Unless Brian, you can think of anything in the use table that would steer us a different way. I would think that would not be an issue.
No, and I just checked. Park trails and civic spaces are permitted by right in all zoning districts. In addition, we, we took anything that we saw that was related to parks and sent that information, that draft to the Parks Department. And we, they've updated us that they have no changes being requested through the process.
Awesome. I think where we're seeing this a lot of times is in floodplain areas that are maybe adjacent to a greenway. And maybe the city is finally able to acquire a parcel or something like that. And then, you know, how do we make sure that happens? So that's good to hear that it's in there. Any other questions, conversation on here? I, I do want to go through if we're okay, Brian, understanding what changes we've requested. And I don't know if you want to go through those or if you want us to go through those.
The only one that I have is the owner occupancy requirement for R one A and R one B. And that's the only one that I've heard consensus on trying to bring that back is, is when we come through the adoption process, have that, you know, kind of drawn up as an amendment.
I believe that is correct. I wanted to confirm that there wasn't any requested changes on the small lot. I don't think there were either. I didn't note any. I just want to make sure that everyone was in agreement there. Okay. So maybe just to make sure that we're all understanding that, then the only requested change that we're really going to have for discussion next meeting, whenever that is.
It, it's not the only change. I mean, certainly throughout your own review, going through the document, there may be other items that you feel need to be revised. So this is just the one that we know about today. So like I said, if there's other things that you see as you're doing your review, you know, you can put a sticky note on it or you can send it to us, just send it to myself and Nancy, you know, not to the whole board, just send it to myself and Nancy. And we can try to document, document all those items that you, you all want to discuss. You know, it helps us to help make those, those conversations a little bit more orderly. This is a big document. This is a big process. We understand that. So it's, it's just any attempt that we can do to help you guys get through that process. That's what we want to make sure that we're doing. So if there's anything, you know, you're, you're not seeing in this presentation, I know I, I went back and watched one of the original steering committee meeting. Meeting, steering committee, meeting, meetings. And I think I remember hearing, I think it was Judy Brown say, I don't want to read the whole code during that meeting, right? You want to be able to get, get the information from us that you need to be able to make the decisions that you have to make. So, you know, we'll, we'll, you'll get the whole draft. And I think Chris will, will provide some of the framework information that we've provided in the past. We just need to update some of these new items. But if there's anything that you're not seeing in this presentation that you feel like we need to, we need to get to you ahead of time or during the present, presentation for the public hearings, please let us know. That's what we're here for. But that, that's mainly it.
Hey Carl, just one second here. Can you clarify when you're going to get us those packets and when then the next meeting?
As soon as possible. We're, we're waiting on, we, we have a few outstanding revisions coming from other departments. What our plan is, is to take any revisions that we make from the draft that you have now and provide a small report that say, here's the changes that we've made. And then once we get all that done, we'll package it all together and, and get it out. So we're, we're going, we're moving as fast as we can.
And you all are doing a fine, fine job. And the next time we're planning to meet is.
The next scheduled meeting is. The next scheduled meeting is July eleventh.
July eleventh, okay. Carl, did you have some?
The EV. Was noted there, but there's not a lot of details on that. Is there any more information on the?
So the the EV parking requirements are being removed from the code. Only to be referenced back to the building code. So there were requirements that were approved with the building code. I'm happy to send those out to you. I don't know exactly what date all that got approved, but it was pretty recently. So they'll have the the numbers and accounts and what the requirements look like. We just make sure that we reference them in our code to say, you know, for certain projects, there are EV requirements. Their requirements are over here.
No. Requirements for developers?
For for like new projects that are being built?
EV spaces?
Yeah, they are. I'll I'll get that. I'll email that out to the group.
Okay, okay.
I'll try to get to that tomorrow on what the draft. Draft is, or I think it's actually completely adopted at this point, but the building code has those requirements.
So to clarify, there's still requirements. They won't be in the development code. They're in the building code.
Right, right. During staff discussions, that felt like the most appropriate place to put them. Because they're going to be the ones that determine. So many other parts of what comes with that built structure. So you think about what planning does. We tell you what you can do. And kind of how you can do it, but they generally tell you how you have to build it. And so, you know, it's determined between the two two areas, the zoning code. Or the building code, where did it need to lie? And it was deemed that the building code was the most appropriate place. And the zoning code or the UDC will just reference. Here's where you need to go look to find that information.
And and just one more clarification. So even if it's a parking lot that's being built. For some reason, that would fall to the building code?
If there's an EV requirement. That's where it gets defaulted to is the building code.
And that requirement would be based on the certain type of building being. Or a certain type of structure or something like that being constructed.
Yeah, I think it's it's dependent on what type of use it is. So don't make me quote too much of it, but I'll I'll definitely get you guys that information by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully tomorrow.
There you go, son, that girl.
I've noticed that most King Supers, all of them that I've seen. Have six or seven spots. And so they're progressing to them. And there's always one or two cars in there. I don't know if they're actually shopping or. Living next door to an apartment building or whatever, but they they have them now.
Yeah, there are a lot of places that are volunteer voluntarily. Putting them in without requirements from municipalities.
All right, anything else that we want to discuss on Chris's presentation? Chris, anything you want to leave us with?
I just appreciate everyone's time and thorough review and thoughtful discussion. This has been really good process.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, well, with that, I think we move on to staff's choice.
So the only question I really have is, do you guys find the format for the presentation suitable? For when we start to go through the adoption process? Is there any more detail that you want to see? That that's my main question.
Can you clarify? What part? Are you talking about Chris's presentation?
Chris's presentation, yes.
You mean, are we going into enough detail with his presentation in hitting highlights of it as opposed to going page by page or something like that?
Yes.
I mean, I I I very much appreciate the summaries that are being provided, the discussion of. What is changing, what's staying the same, and why we're changing things and what the intent of it is. I think that only it's going to help us. You know, approve it and get through that process, but also help interpret it when it comes down to, you know, having. Meetings in front or proposals in front of us. So I I would support continuing on it.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to add that I know Brenda has asked for some real life examples in the past, and so I liked how we had those in the presentation tonight. That was very helpful.
That was my only question.
Would it be possible to do a red line or is there too many changes? To the codes that.
From the original or from like the latest?
From the original, yeah.
From like our current code or from?
Probably wouldn't be. Essentially, we're redlining the entire current code and starting over. So. It would be very, very, very confusing if we were if we were to. Redline because there are certain things that. Are moving out of certain sections. And moving into full chapters by themselves. So the the easiest way to think of it is we're just. Redlining the current one and starting fresh with something new.
I'd I'd like to have a hard copy of those so I can compare the new with the old.
You want the old and the new?
The, well, I have an old, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we we already anticipated. I think we've already ordered notebooks. To make sure and get everybody a hard copy. Of what the proposed draft is going to be. Again, with those edits, any any revisions that have been made from the draft that you have now.
And the the search engine, is that going to be done later or when is that going to happen?
The which one?
For the.
Like an online?
To, yeah, an on online search for. I don't know. That's probably going to be done later. But I was assume, I was under the impression that that was going to be done. Because they they mentioned that the very beginning, they mentioned that. Carbondale. Had that, and I went to Carbondale and it was really nice. You had something you you wanted to look at, you put it in there and you pop pops up and. Everything's right there. Whereas now you got to search through it like today. I searched through some. Look for fencing regulations. And it took me twenty minutes just to find the chapter.
Chris, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I was just going to make a comment on the previous comment on. Comparing the old and the new. One thing that's out there now that might also help with that. Is the section maps we were provided with the initial draft. So. The commentary on what is changing and why might not be as current. But it's definitely the way, as Brian mentioned, it's a it's a whole new organization, a whole new code. However, every most of the standards have some connection to a previous existing standard. So. That comparison can help you when you have the two side by side. To your, the current comment you just made, I think it's it's probably more of a. We're familiar with some of the online formatting tools that can be done. So it might be a coordination with how the city. Loads it on to the municipal code website with the city code.
So two quick good buildings on that. I I believe I recall also. Carl, a discussion about having some sort of online, not just, you know, a search of text, but some sort of. I want to put in an ADU, you know, what am I, what are the code sections that I should be looking at kind of thing? And so. If that is still a possibility, I think that would be good to have. And then. Going back, can you send us a link again to maybe that original documents that did have the. What is changing and and what sections are are being changed and and why and where or where things are going and having that summary would be, I think, beneficial also.
I I think that'd be a very big helpful. Thing to have when somebody wants to build a garage or whatever. And they're looking for information instead of coming down here and asking, going up to a desk and asking people. What do I got to do? They just search it. That's right there.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something that Chris's organization. I wasn't here at the time when all this started, so I'm not sure where where this came from. I I am familiar with the other organization that was interviewed and they do have something like that. So I don't know if it was something that. The other group that was interviewed to be our consultant. Had I do know they have something like that. I only know that because I worked with them in Lubbock when we were rewriting Lubbock's code. And I don't know if that's something that Chris's team. Had promoted originally, so I don't want to put anything in. On them that they they didn't put on themselves, I guess, originally, but. You know, there are ways that we can search in our current formatting. And we're more than happy to help people by turning off. Currently, if you just go in there and you type something in at the top, it searches every title. In our existing municipal code, you can turn a lot of those off, so it's only searching in title sixteen. So there are some tips and tricks that those of us that do this day in and day out have figured out. The other way I do it, I search the PDF. It's a lot faster. And then I can go find the certain sections and drill down. So I I do it a number of different ways. But I don't know if Chris's team had originally planned something like that or not.
Yeah, we we usually. Take our cues from from the cities, because this is always a sticking point that's much bigger than the project. Because it's it now you're starting to deal with the whole municipal code and how is it, what platform is it using? So we don't often find planning departments wanting to have their code on its own platform. It's usually. Piggybacking off of whatever platform the city is using for its overall municipal code. And so I think that's where we're at with the city, although we're we've done and we are familiar with. Other techniques and strategies, but we just. I I don't have any off the the top of my mind right now because I think the decision was that this would be part of the overall municipal code.
And another thing that I will say, and Chris, we've talked about this a number of times. Is once the code is adopted and even going through the adoption process. We plan on creating some one pager documents that we can hand out. Or email to citizens that have questions like, you know, I want to build a detached garage. What do I need to do? Something that's just, you know, we're we're getting really down boilerplate. Here's the requirements built on one page that you need to deal with. Here's where it's located. If there's any additional requirements, we can let them know at that point in time, too. But yeah, we are trying to make some documents that are. We had them at one point in time. I think they've kind of gone by the wayside. But we want to come back and create some that are a little bit more visually appealing and can help. Help folks understand exactly what the requirements are.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, Brooke or John, you guys want to add?
Nothing from me. Nothing for me.
All right, moving on, that was. Staff's choice. Victoria is out, so I've been guessing we don't have any attorney's choice today and commissioner's choice. I'll come down the line this way, Carl.
The parking, I I went downtown today at noon and. I had to park like two blocks away. And then coming in here at six o'clock. I had my choice of fifty spots. So we we've got parking that are extremes of. Spaces and extremes of no spaces. So we've got the whole category there. If we could just balance them out. Move them around.
Some movable barriers for parking?
Yeah, just ship shift them around and move them around by trucks or something. I don't know. Downtown's a mess, though. If if we really want people to go downtown, we need parking for them.
Thanks, Carl. Brenda? And Michelle?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add.
I'm good also. I think I've asked my share of questions this evening. We all did, so. Thank you, everyone. And with that, I think we can adjourn. All right, see you on the eleventh.